The town manager and the town moderator with us. So the first order of business this evening is the declaration of a state of emergency. I know that the town manager sent out to all of us a while ago, this declaration, so I think I'll turn it over to the town manager to walk us through this, both the physical document and its purpose.
Sure, thanks, and I just want to say that at the outset, that the local declaration of state of emergency is not, does not preempt the state and federal states of emergency that have already been declared. And I'll go through the document a little bit, and many other communities around us in the Commonwealth have taken this step as well. We saw it guidance council, as well as the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. So in terms of what does this do in practice, as we sit here today, much, but given the quickly evolving nature of this situation, the declaration may give the town additional flexibility for issues that really haven't even, you know, materialized yet. And also, in terms of, you know, kind of putting things back together once we're through all of this, it may, you know, give us some additional, I don't know if it'll give us access to additional resources, but doing it certainly won't prevent us. So basically, it's something that won't harm us to do it, and it may end up being a useful tool as this unfolds. So that said, so I'm looking at on my screen, so I can't look at all of you at the same time. So it just goes through essentially a series of whereas clauses describing how we got to where we are tonight, and, you know, outlining the number of cases, confirmed cases in Massachusetts, which as of this morning was 256. They updated it at four o'clock, but I did not see that update. I'm sure it's a higher number now. And then it talks about the select board, the Board of Health, the police and fire chiefs, the town manager, and the emergency management director, who in this case is currently the fire chief. And following consultation of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, and other cities and towns has determined that the COVID-19 presents a major disaster in the town of Concord, which poses an immediate threat to public health, safety, and general welfare. And so then it goes on to say that that we, the select board, the Board of Health of the town of Concord, Massachusetts hereby declare that an emergency exists in the town of Concord and issues this emergency declaration pursuant to our powers, including under the Civil Defense Act, Chapter 111 of the Massachusetts General Laws, the Town of Concord's bylaws, and all other applicable laws and regulations, and further pursuant to Section 13 of the Civil Defense Act, hereby appoint the select board director of the Board of Health, the police and fire chiefs, the town manager, and the emergency management director to a local civic defense organization. The declaration of emergency is effective immediately and shall remain in effect until further notice given, until further notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the emergency no longer exists. So really, I mean, everyone, I think the Civil Defense Act has obviously been around for a long time, and it has some authorities, but I think the Board of Health, I think, is looking at right now businesses that are operating and for which the social distancing guidelines really can't be met, and they're, they haven't met to take action on it. But they, I think, along with the state, are looking at potentially additional limitations on those types of businesses. I think, as you're all aware, the governor's issued limitations on bars, restaurants, childcare centers, and gatherings of, the state had been 25, but then after the federal government came out with a limit of 10, I do believe the governor revised the state's position. So right now gatherings of larger than 10 are prohibited, as well as onsite, you know, eating and drinking at restaurants and bars, and also childcare centers, except for those needed to provide childcare for health workers and emergency responders.
So Stephen, without singling any, any of the businesses that may, by their very nature, be unable to meet the six-foot rule, what are the other ones that we would be thinking about?
You know, I think one of the examples that was used is like a tattoo parlor. Like if you're, I don't know if they're already in Concord, but if you're getting a tattoo, that person can't be six feet away. I don't think it would turn out very good.
Right, I'm assuming it's service salons.
That could be on the list as well. I don't want to speak too far for the Board of Health, but I know that they are looking at that. And I know, I see that Town Council is on this call as well, and I know if he wanted to add any more to what the declaration means or expound upon the Civil Defense Act, you know, and the kind of ancient provisions of that that would be in effect.
Stephen, not much to add at all. I hope everyone can hear me. Let me know if you can't. Not much to add at all. It's, it may come into play if there's further action that needs to be taken beyond what's already happening at the state of national level. But it really is a, if you look at the date of it, it's really a Cold War relic. And it, it's prudent to declare an emergency in case there are funding sources that require it, or if we, as we'll talk later about the election, for demonstrating seriousness to the court that we're doing everything we can on election. But other than that, it doesn't really change, it doesn't change how Concord and Concord officials can or should act before or after it's declared.
And I would note, I think Stephen had told me before that a number of our sister communities have already enacted this declaration of emergency or one very similar to it.
That's correct, Mike, and I would also say that there are no provisions in our bylaws or charter for a state of emergency locally. And so that's why the authorities really are vested in that Civil Defense Act, which is why we're, that's the, that's the authorizing statute. You know, I think this is such an unusual circumstance that it's, that's, you know, that's why it's being dusted off after, you know, 60 years. And hopefully, this is the only time in my career that I have to do this.
All right, let me ask comments from other members of the select board. Are there any?
This is sort of related. I was wondering how we can support our local businesses in this time when they're all taking a big hit? That's really not germane to this question, but I want us to keep it in mind.
Why don't we postpone that decision until we get through our formal agenda? Because I think it's really important, if there's anything we can do. I know on the previous call that Stephen and I were on with the fire chief and representatives from various schools, we were quite clear in asking them to reach out to the town if there was something we could do to support them, so let's pick that up.
Okay, thank you.
To deal with this declaration. So is there any other questions or comments about this declaration? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the declaration of emergency as provided in our material and to have this declaration posted on the town's website following its adoption. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Mike, I just, sorry, Mike, I just, we're fortunate to have someone who lives in Concord, who was with the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency for a very long time, Kurt Schwartz, and he was, he was very instrumental in helping prepare this. I just want to thank him for that.
Well, that's great. We all thank him for that. Linda, I wonder if you would call to roll?
Okay, Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye.
I note that this action passes unanimously. Thank you very much. The next order of business is a discussion of the town meeting protocol. This was a protocol that was sent to the town moderator, and the protocol's authority is Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 39, Section 10A. And for this part of our agenda, I think I would turn it over to town moderator to walk us through it. I will note before she begins that Ms. Hotchkiss raised a question which the moderator has incorporated into the draft document that was circulated earlier today. Is that a moderator?
Thank you, Mike. This protocol, it was actually suggested to me by Town Council that it would be whoofus to have a written protocol, in particular for communication and posting, in the event that we do need to use the provisions of Section 10A of Chapter 39 of the General Laws to postpone town meeting, which is looking more likely every day. So this protocol basically tracks the statute, but it spells out certain things, like for example, what is it that we will talk about when the town moderator consults with public safety officials and, and the select board? And what exactly will be in the declaration when it's made? And how will that declaration get communicated to the public? And then there's also a provision for a communication plan that just indicates who's going to be part of that consulting exercise, and, and requests the town manager to put that together with the contact information at the beginning of March of every year, so that we have that ready and available if we have reason to need it. So just a little background, Section 10A of Chapter 39 has only been with us for about five years, and it was originally enacted really to deal with snowstorms, fires, things like that, that that were sudden and short-lived emergencies. And honestly, an emergency like the one we're dealing with now was really not on the radar screen. It wasn't on anybody's radar screen. And I'll invite Mina to chime in anywhere that he wishes here. But I think while there are some divergences of view about exactly what Section 10A authorizes, it does seem to me, and I think Mina concurs, that a public health emergency qualifies as a public safety emergency under the section, so that we do have the authority to use it. And the other question that's been raised, because what was contemplated was short-term public safety emergencies like snowstorms, the, the section of the statute requires the continuance of the town meeting session to happen within 30 days. That's probably not going to be possible here. And nonetheless, currently, without change in the legislation, which may be forthcoming in the next few days, but it hasn't happened yet, we would have to reschedule a town meeting sessions for 30 days, no further away than 30 days of the date of the declaration. So the question comes up, well, can you do that more than once? If 30 days rolls around and you get to your next date, and you still have a public health emergency that dictates against holding town meeting, may you postpone and reschedule again? And my view would be that you can. There's nothing in the statute that says that you can't. And certainly, if you had two snowstorms, one on the day that you originally had the meeting for, and then you were unfortunate enough to have another snowstorm on the date you postponed the meeting to, of course, you would be able to postpone it a second time. I can't imagine you couldn't. But, but Mina, do you have anything to add on those two points?
Carmen, I read the statute the same way you do, and we've advised publicly, Lexington as much. Their town meeting is set to start this coming Monday, the 23rd. The moderator there has already issued the declaration that she's going to push it out 30 days. I agree that public safety includes public health in this case. The bill that's making its way through the legislature now, and there's some indication it'll pass on Monday, or at least be taken up by the Senate and hopefully the House on Monday, makes that clearer by adding public health into the statute. But I think even without it, it, it's, this is clearly a public safety emergency. And I see no reason that you can't do 30 days and then another 30 days. You do have to provide a date, time, and place in the declaration. And the way we've handled that, not knowing what's happening 30 days out, has been to say, we're going to meet in 30 days in the same time and place, and, but added an extra notice to say, we fully expect we may have to do this again, or in their case, because it's a representative town meeting, may have to do it through something like this, through Zoom or some other remote conferencing. I don't think that's feasible with, with an open town meeting. As Carmen alluded to, the legislation is also, that's pending, is also seeking to make it possible to hold town meeting past June 30th, and keep a budget in place if necessary. So if towns can't meet before June 30th, they can operate on the same sort of 1/12 budget, which is, which a regional school district operates on if, if the region can't come to agreement on the budget. So you would use the FY 2020 budget, you know, one month at a time, going forward. That's, that part's not clear, you know, where it's, whether it's going to pass yet, probably will. But that would give some more flexibility as well. And then there's a couple of other provisions in there to allow revolving fund expenditures, stabilization fund expenditures, et cetera, to go along the same line.
And free cash as well.
And free cash as well, yeah, and more flexibility on free cash. So those things are all in the pipeline, but for now, Carmen was frankly far ahead of this, you know, sort of at the beginning of this crisis, asking about it. And so far, you know, nothing is changing our perspective of how this would work. The other thing that you should all know is that she does not need to, this question's come up a couple of times, she doesn't need to open and adjourn the meeting or recess the meeting. It can be done from, from where she's sitting right now. And, and that's by design, so that the moderator doesn't have to go out and, and do all that in the middle of a snowstorm, or in this case, epidemic.
Thank you so much, Mina. So the one, there, there are just two changes that I made in a red line draft that I circulated this afternoon before the call. One is to fix a glitch that Jane was good enough to point out where I had part of, part of 3A, which actually belonged to 3C. So we fixed that. And then the, the other thing I moved was just the question of posting, because posting isn't really an item that would go in the declaration, so I just put that back out as text instead of one of the bullets that goes in the declaration.
And Carmen, a question raised in terms of the first part of this draft, the consultation with town officials, the town officials you will consult with are enumerated. What about the town clerk?
Carmen, I can weigh in on that if you'd like.
Certainly.
The town clerk's role in the statute is not consultation in the, on the front end, but posting on the back end. So once a declaration is made, it has to be submitted to the town clerk and are a set of ways that it has to be posted under the statute. Keep in mind that nothing in the statute limits the moderator from consulting with additional folks. So certainly not to exclude Carrie, or for that matter, it doesn't mention Town Council or the Board of Health or the Health Director. All valid people to consult with. But it's not a requirement to certify that you've consulted with them ahead of time.
And what, one other, one other party that I would add is Susan Bates did ask me to question whether the superintendent of schools ought properly to be on the list. And, and again, the superintendent is someone I would certainly consult with offline, because before we schedule a new date in, in the, in the high school, we would certainly want to talk to the superintendent. But, but she, the superintendent is not formally a party that needs to be consulted under the statute.
So Carmen, this is Linda. I'm not sure, I don't know if you got my email before this call or not. But I was also wondering, the statute seems to mention consultation with select board members, clerial?
Yeah, you're, you're right about that, Linda. And, and again, I'll defer to Mina on this. Here's what I was thinking. Clearly, I have to talk to at least to the chair. If it's possible to talk to more members of the board, I would either let the chair do that or do it myself. But I wouldn't want, in an emergency situation, necessarily, to be required to round up all five of you on the eve of a snowstorm. But, and that was why I left it loose in that way, to require the chair, and then to leave the others as kind of discretionary. But Mina, what, what are other towns doing on this?
So the, the language of the statute doesn't require, it actually is explicit that no open meeting of the, the select board is required in this case. And that's why it uses that kind of funny language, members of the board. What other towns are doing, given that there's Zoom capability or just remote participation capability now, is typically in the meetings that are happening leading up to this decision, the board is sort of endorsing the moderator's view if possible. So the Lexington Board actually met in their last in-person meeting on Monday, and essentially gave guidance to the moderator, this is what we want to do. And she sort of affirmed publicly, yes, I'm, you know, here I am consulting with you. So to the extent, as we get closer to the declaration itself being issued, you're able to set up a call like this, that would be great, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, and it's another forum for announcing it. But if, for instance, we think we're past this, and we decide to go forward with town meeting, but then a rash of cases pops back up and you have to postpone suddenly, there's nothing legally preventing you from talking to the chair and as many other people as you can find, but just making the decision. It's a consultation, not a requirement.
And the other thing is, this protocol is drafted not only for public health emergencies, but for any kind of public safety or weather emergency that might require us to cancel town meeting. And, you know, one example is a bomb scare. And, and that sort of thing can happen literally on the eve of town meeting, and you might have to act very fast. So that, that's the reason I would prefer not to see us have too much required, too many required bases to touch. But, but I agree completely with Mina that the best practice is to convene all of you, and if we can do it quickly on a conference call or on a Zoom call like this, and, and also televise it, even though that's not required, because it's not an open meeting law exercise. But I think it would be, it would be the best practice to have it on Minuteman Network, so that the public could hear the conversation as well.
Was there other questions from members of the select board? Carmen, let me ask you, and I guess Mina, is this something the select board needs to adopt? Or are we just aware of this protocol?
Well, I, I guess it would be my view that it would be, I guess I'd rather see the moderator and the select board and the town manager together adopt it, because I, I guess my feeling is that it's very comforting for citizens to know that all the leadership in your town is working together. And that's why I would have us all adopt it together. But I don't think it's really necessary. I think if, if, if you're comfortable with it, and this is my protocol, then I'll, it's like town meeting traditions and procedures. It doesn't require anybody's, anybody's formal adoption, but, but it would be out there on the website and publicized so everyone knows how to work.
Well, I do think it would be a good idea for the select board to adopt this as presented to us and as amended, for the same reason you have articulated. My fellow select board members, I'd certainly entertain a motion to adopt the Weather and Public Safety Emergency Protocol for Concord as presented and amended by the town moderator.
Yeah, and, and I agree, and I just want to thank Carmen and Mina for being proactive and being so thorough about this. It's really well done and thought out.
So can I have a motion to this effect?
So move.
And is there a second?
Second.
And I assume there's no further discussion. Would the clerk please call to roll?
Sure. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss? Not present currently. Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye.
Sorry, Mrs. Jane, aye. I had muted my
Okay, Ms., I'll call again, Ms. Hotchkiss.
Aye.
All right, thank you. I note that it passes, and it passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Carmen, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Carmen.
Thank you all.
The next item on our agenda is the postponement of town election. This is a little more complicated. This isn't done simply by adoption of a protocol, but there has to be either one or two approaches to postponing our town election. That is, an act of the mass legislature, bill submitted by the governor, or the town competition, the general court for the authority to do this. As of today, as near as I understand it, the legislature has not adopted such a bill. And we're coming up on a week before our election. So perhaps I might turn to Mina. Through his law firm, he has prepared a letter going to Representative O'Day and Senator Roche about legislation for local elections. And he has also prepared a document that would be submitted to the courts, giving the town the right to postpone these. So perhaps, Mina, you could walk us through this.
Mike, I'd be happy to. And I'll let Christina cover the portion regarding going to court, but just very quickly where we are on the legislative fix. There are two ways through the legislature itself. One is for the governor to sign, to file a bill on behalf of a particular town. We have advised against that, given how much is going on in the legislature. Asking the governor to try and do it town by town is not going to take any less time than the general legislation. There is, as of today, legislation very similar to what we asked to be filed by Senator Roche and Rep. O'Day, who chair the Committee on Municipal Affairs, basically. They have in front of them for a hearing in the Senate for sure, and likely the House on Monday, a bill that would allow postponing elections. My understanding is that it was held up to some degree because for elections that are happening not quite as soon as Concord's, there were questions of whether there would be ballot, signatures could be collected differently, mail voting, a bunch of other great ideas to try to simplify this, but had a lot of details to be worked out, and, and the legislature was moving slowly on that. So we've been in touch, again, with a state rep who's been involved in this, Rep. Sacolo from a few towns over. I know that Stephen has been reaching out to the, your delegation. We included them on this, on our package. And our hope is that Monday, there will be action on this, and will be swiftly signed by the governor. All indications that the governor is eager to help on this issue.
So, Mina, I actually have a news flash on that. I did hear, actually, while we were in this meeting, from Senator Barrett, that the Senate President has announced that there will be Senate action on Monday to post, specifically to postpone elections scheduled for the 31st, and others, I think. So that, that just happened.
Yeah, so the Senate Yeah, so the Senate, I think, is going to get it done Monday, we hope the House will, a state rep I spoke to believes they will talk on Monday too, so that's the good news. If you can't get action swiftly enough from the legislature, we'll need to consider whether to go to the Superior Court, which has the authority under its general jurisdiction to issue this kind of order, and I'll let Christina describe sort of how that process would work and what it would look like from here.
Yep, thanks, Mina, and I hope everyone can hear me.
Christina, just identify yourself, please, for the record.
Christina Marshall Anderson and Krieger.
Thank you.
Thank you, and as Mina mentioned, we've prepared a draft verified complaint and request for relief from the Superior Court, so that's ready to go if we need to bring it in. As you might be aware, the Superior Court, as well as all of the other courts in Massachusetts, are effectively shut down except for emergency proceedings at the moment, however, we're aware that both Wellesley and Braintree, at least as of yesterday, had brought similar claims to Norfolk Superior Court and were successful in getting an order delaying their March 31st location, so we expect to be able to do the same in middlesex. The way that that would work is we would file the verified complaint that we have drafted and get in front, well, get on the phone actually at this point with a judge, kind of present the issues, and would expect whatever judge was assigned to the case to be able to kind of enter the order pretty quickly after we filed it. So logistically, it might be a bit tricky, given the clerks' offices and their staffing, we're aware that clerks have been accepting other filings like this via email or other electronic means, or if necessary, Mina or I or somebody else from the firm is available to get into court and get this done for the town.
All right, thank you, the question I guess is, this is something that the select board would have to authorize you to do?
I think we'd prefer that, it would be a stronger motion to say that the select board is requesting this, we'd want to note that in there, we're going to note the declaration that was voted on today, so ideally it would be pursuant to that vote.
And Mina, do you think we should do that this evening, or should we wait and see what the legislature gets done in the first couple of days of the next week?
Stephen, I'm not sure if Kari's on the line, I think it's possible to wait till at least Tuesday morning on our end, this, as Christina said, this all should be done sort of very quickly on the court's side if we have to. Wellesley did it the day before, I think Braintree did it a day or two before their election. The concern would be if Monday for Kari is, or Tuesday for Kari's too late to do everything she might need to do to, you know, to run up, just to postpone the election at that point. So it's really on your end, logistically.
Mike, that would make me think that either we would have to plan a select board meeting for Monday night regardless, or do it now, in, you know, in preparation.
If I could comment on that, Andover also got one, I think, on pretty short turnaround time, the town of Sudbury voted to postpone their election, I think in anticipation of legislative action. I know Kari is aware of the Senate President's announcement about action on Monday, so I think if the board did vote to authorize the town clerk to, you know, make the necessary arrangements to postpone the election for a certain time, subject to, you know, subject to approval of, you know, state law or a decision by the court, kind of provisionally, that would, I think, give us enough to, you know, put the wheels turning, or start the wheels turning to do the postponement, and then I think we have reasonable certainty that that authority will in fact be coming.
All right.
I don't know, Mina, is that, or Christina, I said that, but is that, do you think we would be covered?
I think so, yeah, that's perfect, just to authorize it and then work with the town manager and the clerk to decide when to pull the trigger on going to court if we need to.
I think the select board could make a clear statement that our intent is to move ahead to postpone these elections, and we're just waiting for either authority from the legislature or from the Superior Court to do so, and then we could move this evening to go ahead and approve this verified complaint and authorize council to submit it if necessary to the Superior Court. Does that sound like a path forward, Christina and Mina?
Yeah, I think that sounds perfect.
All right, so are there other questions or comments from members of the board?
Well, I don't remember if the complaint lists a specific date that we're going to postpone it to.
No, I don't think it does.
And whether this state law that might get passed Monday, does that list a date? Like, is it a 30-day thing or what?
We haven't seen a copy of the proposed legislation that they'll consider on Monday, so I'm not sure of that detail, but we can, once we get it, we will let you all know.
And whatever it turns out to be, once the legislature passes, that we'd have to be in compliance with it, so. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve the verified complaint for injunctive relief in the Superior Court and authorize town council to file this complaint if necessary.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Linda, would you call the roll?
Sure. Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye?
Thank you, I note that it passes unanimously. Thank you, thank you council very much for your help with this, appreciate it. The next item on our agenda was, we talked about it at our emergency meeting last week, but to move to this evening to formally cancel Patriots' Day activities, including the Patriots' Day Parade, the Miriam Corner event, the Don Salute, and the ceremony at the Old North Bridge.
Can I make a comment on that?
Please.
I did speak to the superintendent of the National Park, B.J. Dunn, and all the other stakeholders and event partners for those events have already moved in this direction. They did so in a formalized way as opposed to more of a suggestive way that I thought we did last week, so formalizing this will bring us in line with the other event partners, and I know the National Park will take the lead on communicating the cancellation of these events to the broader community.
Well, good, there are some, there are some participants in the parade, I know, though, that come in from out of town, so I will, if this, if this motion passes, I'll be in touch with John Arena, the chair of our ceremonies committee, so that he can be in touch with some of those marching bands and stuff that come to our parade, make sure to let them know that it's been canceled.
So this is Linda, and one question I have is whether the Honored Citizens event is also considered a town event, and I think it is, and I'm wondering why that's not on this list.
Well, this list was aimed at the Patriots' Day events, and the Honored Citizen event is, I think, on March 22nd, so that's why I didn't include it.
Leading up to the Miriam's Corner, correct?
Miriam's Corner, I think it's the weekend before Patriots' Day.
I know, but the Honored Citizen participates in the Miriam's Corner event?
Absolutely.
So-
All right, well, why don't we just amend that and just add the Honored Citizens event as well, I don't have any problem with it.
If it's, yeah, if it's more than 10 people, I think you need to do that.
Yeah, I think it would be canceled by the fact that there are more than 10 people. All right, is there any other comment about this? Right, so I would entertain a motion to formally cancel Patriots' Day events, including the Patriots' Day Parade, the Miriam Corner event, the Don Salute, and the ceremony at the Old North Bridge, and the Honored Citizens event.
So move.
Is there a second? Further discussion? Linda, would you call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Hotchkiss?
Aye.
Ms. Ackerman?
Aye.
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself, aye?
Thank you, I note that it passes unanimously. Let me say that tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock, the town moderator, the town manager, myself, the superintendent of schools, and our emergency management director, Tom Johnson-Archie, will be in the townhouse and there will be a live broadcast video transmission, bringing all of the citizens up to date on the various activities, excuse me, I forgot to mention Susan Rask, the Director of Public Council, will also be there, bringing the town up to date on all of the activities that these various organizations are undertaking to help keep our citizens as safe as possible.
What time is that, Mike?
It's 11 o'clock, I believe, Stephen?
Around 11 o'clock, I said 11-ish to give us a little bit of time to get logistics and, you know, space, you know, earmarks, so to speak, for social distancing in order, but yeah, around that time. I should add that I am planning on issuing another robo-call, probably this evening, to the community, updating them on things that have happened since the last call, which will include a number of, which will include the announcement of the declaration that you just made, the cancellation of the events, as well as reminders about, you know, hygiene and social distancing best practices, there's some language in it from Susan Rask, so hopefully, hopefully that'll go out this evening and give residents some more information.
I don't know whether this is the right time to bring it up, but I've received a number of questions that you might want to touch on, or at least we should be publicizing in a regular way, having to do with trash, specifically the renewal of stickers.
Yeah, oh, I did, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry, in my script I do have information about essential services, that will continue.
But I think what Jane's talking about, I've had these questions too, we're about to phase out the green stickers and put in the orange ones, and we need a real good announcement about, are they going to be delayed?
I know Stephen is working on that, I think residents should call the Public Works, should call Concord Public Works and ask if arrangements can be made for mailing or paying by phone, I think they're trying to accommodate those requests as best they can, bearing in mind that we do have limited staffing.
Right, but people are not able to get the orange stickers right now, right? So I was, I had heard it was going to be delayed, I'm not sure.
I got a sticker today.
You got your sticker in the mail?
No, I went to the grocery store.
But did you get your barrel sticker, or just-
My barrel sticker.
At the grocery store?
I think it's a good idea to try to get articulated as clearly as we can what town services are going to be continued and what accommodations are going to be made, and so I think that's something that we can work with, with the town manager, to make sure we continue to put out a stream of information, and transitioning kind of back to Susan's question, but I'll phrase it this way, you know, if there are questions that you hear about from your constituencies or your friends, let's get them all focused into the town manager so that he can react to them and continue to put out a stream of useful information to the town, and that goes back to the remarks that Susan made earlier in the meeting, and that is, if there are suggestions as to what we can do that might be helpful to the business community or any parts of our community, we should just tee them up and get them into the town manager so we can begin to work on them. I know earlier, the town manager in cooperation with the police chief moved to just suspend parking meters in town so that that wouldn't be an impediment or, I'm not sure it would be, but I think that's a good gesture, so if there are other things for the business community, other parts of town, let's get the information into Stephen so we can begin to act on them.
Well, I do know that one other question that's been posed to me by several people is when it's appropriate to pull in all of the lawn signs with, you know, relevant to the upcoming election, clearly we've just indicated that this will be postponed by one way or another. It's a, I think, a number of the candidates are wondering what to do.
Well, a number of lawn signs that were up, just a second, Stephen, a number of lawn signs that were up that perhaps were not appropriately up, but I think we need to address this, so Stephen, please.
Yeah, so there is a bylaw, a signed bylaw that does address where they can go, and so obviously all the candidates are reminded, candidates and their supporters are reminded to refer to the bylaw to make sure that the signs are placed appropriately, the building inspector does have the authority to enforce that and will, you know, pick up signs that aren't appropriately placed. The clerk has been communicating with the campaigns directly on a variety of issues, including the election, and certainly any guidance on, you know, taking back in signs until a certain date will be a part of that communication.
Great.
Thank you.
Another good thing that was announced was the Code Red, and I'm not sure if, maybe some citizens didn't get that announcement, if they're not signed up to news and notices or whatever, so I would like to recommend that you include some information about Code Red in the robo-call tonight.
Code Red is the robo-call.
Oh, I see.
So the software, the software that we use to do the reverse 911 calls is called Code Red, and actually, Terry, that's a great point, you can sign up through the town's website and get your number on there, and so when, and I think Linda, you had asked this question as well, if people don't get it, it generally means that they have not signed up for it, and this is a, yeah, I think all towns struggle with making sure they have a healthy and accurate list of phone numbers for emergency purposes like this, so this event, if we can take a positive out of it, should be something that gets people focused on making sure they register a home and/or cell number that can be reached in a situation like this. I know there's a lot of people who may not have access to, either have access to the internet or may not be, I'll just say, you know, tech savvy enough to be watching a meeting online or, you know, go to the website for updates, and that's for whom that system is really important, but they have to, and they can call the police department too, I mean, they call down to the police department, someone could walk them through signing up, but generally anyone can go on the web and sign up for Code Red phone call, and I hope people do, we have no way of knowing who's signed up and who's not, I mean, other than, I mean, people change phone numbers, drop landlines, do all that stuff, so it really is something that people have to opt into.
And Stephen, I think you just brought up a really important point, which is that a lot of folks in town have switched over to cellphone use only, and not all of their phone numbers have translated, so better safe than sorry.
And other people don't even know about Code Red, so if we can publicize it, the better.
I agree, we've put out, signed up things, and we'll continue to relay the message, but I think the trouble is, if we're relaying our messaging through like News and Notes or via email, it's the same people that don't get that or don't look at it that feel like they don't have access to Code Red, and you see where I'm going.
Yeah.
I think it's, if you know people, I mean, and this is kind of, to go back to the questions that have been raised about services and things like that, a lot of this boils down to really a small number of people having questions, and since we're kind of figuring out a lot of this as we go and the situation- out a lot of this as we go and the situation changes, like, you know, not even on a daily basis, on sometimes an hourly basis, it's almost easier just deal with the situations individually as they come up and then use that to feed additional messaging from the town, but not at the expense of taking care of the need that may be present. And so if you hear from people who didn't get the call, let us know, you know, if they can't go to the website to sign up, like I said, have them get in touch with the police department, and they can talk through signing them up. We can take care of things like that. But, you know, it's hitting, hitting an unknown unseen target is a challenge, especially, like I said, with the limited staffing we have and all the other things we're trying to fit, you know, while we're building the airplane in the air.
I'm surprised, for a real emergency, we have to rely on an opt-in system of notifying all of our citizens. I-
Well, we have, we have a lot of phone numbers. When you, you know, Code Red, a part of the deal with them is they do update and audit the numbers, but that's not going to catch it, you know, someone switching over, you know, you know, there'll be a few dozen people, I'm sure, who have dropped lines or changed numbers or just didn't get, maybe had unlisted numbers, didn't get figured in there. It's not 100% opt-in. We do have a database of numbers, but it is, they do change, and like I said, this is a common thing with these systems.
All right, or is there other comments?
Well, I don't know if this is an appropriate time to bring this up, but I did have kind of a general question about how the employees are coping, are they able to work at home, is morale okay? Just sort of some general report about how things are going.
Sure, and actually, it's funny, I was going to jump back in with something. One of the things that we've tried to do as an organization is, because we have had people come to the office to work, there are a lot of people working remotely. In my own case, I've done a little bit of both. I've taken some, you know, meetings, phone calls from home, and then come in to do some other things. I'm at townhouse right now, but, you know, we've been able to update our remote working licenses that allow people to access our files. We've greatly expanded that. We've kind of collected laptops that aren't being used while town departments are closed to redeploy those to the folks who need them. For the people who do come to work, you know, in support of local businesses, we've done takeout for lunch for folks. It's kind of a way to, you know, soften the impact on people who are, who do have to be here, and like I said, to try and support our local businesses at the same time. You know, I'll be candid, I think, like everyone, there is, there is stress and anxiety about this issue. There's so much uncertainty from a public, you know, public policy standpoint, and just when you think you know something, it changes. You know, but we have an outstanding team of people who are just so completely committed to the citizens of Concord that we've been really able to manage this, I think, as well as possible. I've been, you know, I'm new, but I've been inspired by the people who have been here a while and their really just amazing professionalism and level of performance. But, yeah, I mean, we try and support each other and, you know, don't, you know, try and manage expectations about output when we realize it's a non-traditional work arrangement. But our focus really is on the community and making sure that those needs are met.
Thank you, and I hope you will convey on behalf of the board to all of the folks in town that are working with you our thanks and great appreciation for all they're doing for us.
I definitely will, thank you, Mike.
Here, here. Mike, before we consider adjourning, I did want to, are we going to have, I have gotten a public comment on my email feed. I don't know whether we're going to process any of that, but I have one to offer.
Go ahead, let's hear it.
One resident has emailed me and asked, can we send postcards to all of the residents asking them to sign up for Code Red?
We certainly could. We did do a mailing, we did do a mailing to seniors late, last week to notify them about what was happening with services and things like that. I don't know that that included a message about signing up for Code Red. It probably should have, we didn't really, that letter went out before I did, before I did the phone message. I think we could, I mean, that's a resource thing. I think we've done a lot of messaging. It's expensive to do that, but we can certainly try. I don't, we can certainly try that, yeah.
All right, good suggestion. Any other comments or questions?
Did we address the parking fees?
We did.
Okay.
Mike, can I make one more comment? I'm sorry. I just, I do want to, I do want to report one other thing. We did this afternoon have our second community stakeholder call. Tom, Fire Chief Tom Judge, who's also our emergency management director, has been coordinating the larger group that includes the Concord Public Schools with Superintendent Hunter, the private schools are all represented, a lot of the, you know, Deaconess Concord Park, Emerson Hospital, that a lot of the large, you know, institutional stakeholders are on this kind of, this call list, and we had a Zoom meeting just like this one this afternoon, and just exchanging information, you know, a lot of discussion about shortages of personnel protective equipment, logistical challenges, just like I said, not, not anything major, but just a great way to share information and keep people connected during this crisis. And so I just want to give the board the confidence that the town is really approaching this, like I said, in a way that we maybe wouldn't normally deal with a snowstorm or something like that. Like I said, we are, we are writing it as we go, but that, that larger community integration is something that we're really trying to focus on.
I was on that call, too. It's really quite informative. Thank you. Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if it made sense to have someone on that call that represents the business, the general business community in Concord. Like, you know, one of the co-chairs of the Economic Vitality Committee or someone who represents those stakeholders.
Sure, I'll pass that along to Chief Judge. I'm sure he'll be happy to include somebody on that. I'll get ahold of the Concord Business Partnership and see if somebody on that organization would be interested in doing it. Good suggestion, thank you, Susan. Other comments or questions?
This is, I have a question. This is Carmen. This is just a question as a citizen. What will happen to absentee ballots that people have already cast in the, in the local election if the election is postponed? Will those just carry over to the new date, or, yes, that's what I see Steve nodding?
That's the intent, Carmen. This is, sorry to just jump in. I should, that will be the intent under the new legislation and in the complaint as we've drafted it.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, well, I thank you all for making yourselves available for this meeting. It's pretty clear that we will likely have another meeting sometime next week. I have already canceled the regularly scheduled Monday meeting, but I suspect as some of these things continue to unfold, we may need to do this again, and I'll keep you posted and let you know as soon as I know anything. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you all very much. Stay well.
You too.